I would like to call the January 13, 2015 School Board Meeting to Order. If you will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any additions or corrections to our agenda?
Yes, Madam President, I would like to request the addition of another executive session for attorney-client privilege, please.
Okay, anything else?
Sit.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as corrected?
Absolutely.
Dr. Black, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. So moved seven, I'm sorry, six zero. Moving on to our recognitions and presentations with Jennifer Bradford-Fernan.
Good evening. Tonight, we recognize Renaissance Teachers of the Month who were selected September through December 2014, and I'd like to invite them to the front of the room with Mr. Hall at this time. Salina Media Group recognizes teachers each month through radio announcements. Dick Two's from Citywide Self-Storage delivers prize packages to each of the teachers filled with coupons and gifts from area merchants. Some of the businesses participating in the Renaissance program include McDonald's, Kansas Wesleyan University, Harloff, Dillons, Coyote Canyon, Walmart, YMCA, and 24/7 Travel Store. September through December, Renaissance Teachers of the Month were: Central High School, Kristen Menzies, Student Support Counselor. Gloria Johnson, Algebra I and Transitional Algebra Teacher. Lakewood Middle School, Shelley Solden, 7th Grade English Teacher. Patty Emme, 7th Grade Science Teacher. South High School, Elizabeth Burke, Social Studies 3 and 4 American History Teacher. Toby Eckert, Spanish 1 and Spanish 2 Teacher. South Middle School, Miriam Gogadi, Vocal and General Music Teacher. Corey Ritter, 7th and 8th Grade English Language Arts Teacher. Kimberly Rickles, Math Reading Teacher. Dalla Roberts, Family and Consumer Science Teacher. Due to prior commitments, the following were unable to be with us today: Chris Barkley and Lyric Cairns, South High School; Linda Nelson, Central High School; Carl Hines, Lakewood Middle School. We'll take a picture and then the Board will congratulate you.
You have too many talls. We have too many in the back, yeah.
Got a lot of moving parts over here.
Thanks for your work with our kids. We appreciate what you do.
Glad you're part of us.
Appreciate your work with the kids.
Glad to have you here.
Appreciate your work.
Thanks for coming.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to our approval of our consent agenda items, which include the minutes of the December 9, 2014 Regular Meeting, the minutes of the December 16, 2014 Special Meeting, Personnel Reports, Financial Reports, which include December Bills List and the December Bond Bills List, the Treasurers Report for November, Investment Report for November, Journal Entries for November, and the Bond Budget Summary for December, Professional Development, which includes Individual Development Plans, College Credit, District Staff Development Plans, and the Approval of the Renewal of Durham School Services Contract, which will run from July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2018, containing two one-year optional extensions. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
Madam President, I move approval of the Consent Agenda Items as presented.
Thank you, and a second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. So moved six zero. Moving on to our public forum, if anybody would like to address the Board, now is the time to do so. Seeing none, we'll move on to our Action Agenda Items, starting with the Athletic Trainer Agreement with Mr. Hall.
Yes, Madam President, this is a request for the Board of Education to act on renewing an agreement with Kansas Wesleyan University to provide athletic trainer services for our two high schools. A little bit of the history on this, we started this partnership really with both of our two high schools two years ago. We had an original agreement that started in August of 2013, and it actually expires in May of 2015. And prior to that time, each high school, South High School actually had a person on staff who's a Certified Athletic Trainer, which helped them in terms of providing services for the kids, but that particular person ended up getting a different job, and so they no longer had athletic trainer services. So at that point in time, we visited with Kansas Wesleyan University to explore the possibility of Kansas Wesleyan providing Certified Athletic Trainer Services for both of our two high schools. Part of that time, they actually had been working with Central High School, and so we thought about coming up with an agreement with them where they would provide Certified Athletic Trainer Services, and what they do is they go out and they bring in graduate students who are Certified Athletic Trainers, but while they're working on their graduate degree at Kansas Wesleyan, they have kind of a two-year commitment with our two high schools. And it's been outstanding, an outstanding arrangement thus far. I've been busy with both athletic directors from both South and Central, and they can't say enough about the good relationship between our school system and Kansas Wesleyan providing athletic trainer services. It's absolutely a vital need for our kids in terms of the safety and welfare of our students. I had the opportunity, this first 10 was attending a ballgame at South High last week, and one of our athletes was injured, and a very, very quick response time with our athletic trainer who happened to be in the building right there at the same time, happened to be in a different gym. And so, you know, I would ask the Board of Education to consider renewing that agreement for another two-year term, the cost is the same, at $70,500 per school per year, which is right in line with what all the other APCTL schools are paying for their athletic trainer services. So with that in mind, I would recommend to the Board of Education that you approve the renewal of this agreement with Kansas Wesleyan University for another two-year period beginning August 17, 2015, and ending May 31, 2017, for Certified Athletic Trainer Services.
Madam President?
Yes.
I recommend that we approve the Agreement for Sports Medicine Program with Kansas Wesleyan University, beginning August 17, 2015, and ending May 31, 2017, as presented.
Thank you, can I get a second?
I do, I have a second.
Awesome, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. So moved six zero. Moving on to our next action agenda item, which is to set a special meeting for Executive Session.
Yes, Madam President, and this particular month is a month where we just had one regular Board Meeting scheduled. I would like to request of the Board of Education, if we could set another meeting for two weeks from this evening, the purpose of which would be discussion of Certified Personnel, and it'd all be an executive session, but it would be nice to have that opportunity to do it at that time. We've, I know the Board's been inundated with schematic designs in the last few months, and it would be nice if we could utilize this time to discuss Certified Staffing.
Okay. Can I get a motion to, thank you.
Yes, I move that we set a special meeting for Tuesday, January 27, 2015, at 5:00 p.m. at the District Office for the Purpose of Executive Session for Personnel.
Thank you, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. So moved six zero. Moving on to our last action agenda item, which is their 2015 Legislative Platform.
Yes, Madam President, if I could kind of beg the Board's indulgence for just a sec, indulgence to try to kind of get settled in here. I would like to kind of stand up and present this to the Board of Education. It is our formal legislative platform for 2015, and would also like to provide an opportunity for the Board, after we've had an opportunity to kind of share this information, to encourage comments from any of the Board of Education members, or questions that you might have in terms of the direction that we're headed in this next legislative session. Each of you should have, I believe on your desktop, should have a copy of the proposed legislative platform for 2015, so if you want to go ahead and pull that up, I will be referring to that document and kind of walking you through that document as a part of my comments. I think we also had copies for the audience as well, so each of you should have a copy, and we'll just walk through that together. But, you know, where are we with the upcoming legislative session? Every year, I try to characterize the upcoming legislative session, and I'm somewhat at a loss for this one.
I was thinking of the guy that holds the record.
Yeah, it's like the sinking ship, maybe? I don't know. I mean, it's, I'm trying to characterize, and I tell you what, almost insurmountable challenges. I mean, that might be a way to characterize it, but it's going to be a challenge that only with working with our legislators, both our local delegation, as well as all of our legislators across the state, will we be able to accomplish the task at hand. You know, we have, for the first time in our history, we have, we're facing a tremendous budget deficit by the end of the current fiscal year, fiscal year 15. I know the Governor's made some proposed allotments to help balance the current year budget, but even with those allotments, we're still looking at close to a $700 million deficit by the end of fiscal year 16. That being the case, I know we're all looking forward to the Legislature Convention yesterday. We had the new body sworn in yesterday, the Governor had his inaugural address yesterday. We also are looking forward to the Governor's State of the State Address Thursday evening, and some of the rumors out there is that the Governor, besides his proposed two-year budget, which is part of our platform, that you realize now that the state has two-year budgets, which is good, we believe in that, and that we believe that to be important for planning purposes. But there's also some rumor that the Governor's also going to be proposing a plan for rewriting the school finance formula. And so that's also part of our platform as well, to discourage our local legislators from getting involved in that at this point in time, for some obvious reasons. But where we are right now, we have approximately a $279 million shortfall for the current fiscal year, for fiscal year 15. The Governor's allotments, which include basically borrowing, and I use that in quotations, borrowing from the Transportation Fund, and diverting the allotment that was supposed to be going to Capers to help balance the current fiscal year budget, even with that, we're still facing a deficit in fiscal year 15, fiscal year 16. I had an opportunity, a little over two weeks ago, to meet with our local legislators. I met with Representative Clayes, Representative Johnson, Representative Dirks, at the Chamber Legislative Meeting. The purpose of that was to share with them the K-12 Legislative Platform, in so much as it relates to the Chamber's Legislative Platform, because we have a piece on the K-12 piece within this line of Chamber's Platform. This line of Chamber of Commerce has already adopted that platform. It's very, very similar to the platform that I'll be presenting to the Board of Education this evening. Each of you have had the opportunity to respond and share your insight into this particular platform as well. As interesting as I was having conversations with our local dignitaries, several questions came up, and one of the questions that came up, it had to do with, and remember, this is pre-Gannon Decision. Several legislators had already shared that there were conversations taking place among colleagues to rewrite the school finance formula before they had even heard what the Shawnee County District Court was going to render as far as the decision. So I am concerned that that's going to be an impetus going forward and a goal for this upcoming legislative session. I think we need to do everything we can to discourage our local delegation from being part of that conversation. The Gannon Decision came out a little over a week, a week and a half ago now. Interesting themes that came out of that, I would have to say, and I venture to believe that each of you would agree, that none of us were really surprised by what the Shawnee County District Court three-judge panel rendered. But there are a number of general themes. They did find that based on the Rose Principles, as they were given that charge by the Kansas Supreme Court to determine adequacy, they came out very, very simply, very, very clearly, and said that our schools are not adequately funded. That came as no surprise. They also said they did not mention a specific amount, nor did they want to, but they did suggest a window of an amount. They said, you know, the state legislature could probably adequately fund K-12 education in Kansas anywhere between $548 million and $771 million. Gave them a window to kind of work with him. So if we end up taking the low amount, save $500 million, in addition to the projected $700 million deficit by the end of fiscal year 16, we're looking at about a $1.2 billion deficit, billion with a B. Tremendous, tremendous challenge that is facing our local legislature in the state of Kansas. They did venture out of several guesses in terms of, okay, what does this look like with the base? And that was interesting, because this particular platform is not unlike many of the other platforms that the Board of Education has adopted, and those of you that have been on the Board for a while, you see the similarities here. Our mantra has always been, we have to fund the base. And you can see the history of base state aid per pupil in the state of Kansas and what's happened recently. We're down to $3,852 compared to where we were 13 years ago, about the same. And we've always, our contention's always been, it's about funding the base. The Shawnee County District Court said the same thing, fund the base. They suggested several amounts. They mentioned $4,654 per student would be an adequate amount, assuming that all the weights were upscaled as well. That means the weights for students for at-risk, for free lunches, the weights for students who qualify for English language learners, the weights for students for transportation density and travel. If those are upgraded as well, $4,654 a student might get it. They also said, if you rely on your local option budget, provided if you keep the discretionary status, meaning it's up to local taxpayers to either agree to pay a, have a local option budget, or even fund it with the middle levy or not, which is a problem that we have with equalization, because if some, all districts can't have, can't get local taxpayers to agree to do that, and it creates an inequitable situation. So the Shawnee County District Court said that if you want to keep that with the discretionary status, then that base state aid per pupil could go up as high as $4,968. So suffice it to say, somewhere in the ballpark of $4,505,000 per student on the basis where we should be compared to where we are right now, $3,852. It was interesting, within the court's decision, there was nothing stated about the amount spent per pupil expenditure-wise. It was all about the base, and that's been our contention from the beginning. Interestingly, they found no flaws in the current finance formula. They rendered in their decision that the current formula as written is fine, it's equitable, it's good for Kansas school districts, it must be funded. And so they charged with them that, you know, if you write the school finance formula, that's fine, but you don't have to, because the existing formula as written will meet the test of the court, the legal test. They also mentioned too, that the legislation encouraged the Legislature to accept the constitutional responsibility of funding Kansas public schools, and do not continue to shoulder that burden on local taxpayers in the form of the local option budget. To bring the local option budget back to its intent was its first start 15 years ago, which was for additional items that local Boards of Education would like to add to supplement educational services. Since that time, it's really become a necessity to meet operating costs. It says you need to get back to the point to where that's the purpose of the local option budget. So I have to say that the decision of the Gannon, the Gannon Decision was really not surprising. So where are we with that process? Well, the next step is the state will most assuredly appeal that. Timeline, we're looking at anywhere, probably about a year, is what their estimate. They could fast-track it, we could get a decision as early as next summer. I don't expect that to happen. I really expect that we're probably a year out before we make that decision, before they make that decision. So we're really looking at the next legislative session, the 2016 legislative session. So what I have before you is the USD 305 Legislative Platform for 2015, but I would argue that we could almost say 2015 and 2016. And I say that for a reason, because I am not so naive to think that when we're facing a $700 million budget deficit in two fiscal years, plus the court decision asking for about another $500 to $700 million, that now is probably not the time to be going to our legislators saying we need to increase funding. And so that being the case, I believe we need to take the approach that we are consistent with our message. This is the same message that this Board of Education, this district has had for a number of years, that we maintain that message, that we work with our local legislators to help close that funding gap, that funding deficit, and that we all work toward increased funding for public education, most definitely to include USD 305 and Salinas students. But with that in mind, I do want to bring to your attention several areas that I believe to be most important, and recommendations that I will continue to make to our local legislators. And I will tell you, there's a number of areas that we are critically in need when it comes to K-12 funding, and I don't have to look so far as just across the room to Executive Director Mike Lowers and the issues that he's facing with Central Kansas Cooperative Education, and the need for increased special education funding. Ms. Brander serves on the CKCIE Board of Directors and Board of Control, and we've had numerous conversations about what that looks like. I will tell you, last year, because of the fact that special education funding hasn't been increased in a number of years, I can't even think back to the last time we actually had an increase, I will tell you that currently it's being funded at 72% of excess cost. The state statute is 92%. And we were, we're asking for 100%, and it's not there, and we need additional dollars for special education. I know last year, Mr. Lowers had to work with his staff and with local suits to create some bond, or create some budget reductions in the amount of about $800,000, in addition to increased assessments for school districts that are part of CKCIE. This year, for the current budget year going into next year, we're looking at potentially a 17% increase in our assessment, which for us will be about $600,000. So the fewer dollars that are allocated towards special education means that local school districts need to continue to pick up that additional cost. And it's not just legally responsible, and the thing that we need to do, it's ethically the right thing to do. We have students who rely on those services, and so we have to continue to increase that funding because of the fact that it has been increased by the state. So that's one of our primary recommendations, to see increased funding in special education. And I even put this down in somewhat in a priority level. I put that above, believe it or not, funding for All Day K, because I believe All Day K to be extremely important as well. But seeing the extremely poor condition that we are faced with with special education funding, it has to be the number one priority. Now, back to All Day K, we're implementing All Day Kindergarten 16, 17. That's a kudo, that's a celebration, that's great for kids, that's going to be good for our kids. Irrespective of the state stepping up and funding the other half-day, we will do what the other 275 school districts in the state of Kansas have already been doing for years, and we will fund All Day Kindergarten even without the state's support. However, we are encouraging our legislature to step up and fund All Day Kindergarten. The Governor last year rolled that out in his State of the State Address, that he supported funding for All Day K. I would like to think that it's in his future State of the State Address. We will see what happens on Thursday evening. But that is an extremely important recommendation, moving forward, because we will have All Day Kindergarten here in just a couple of years. So that's exciting. At the same time, when we're looking at a hole that's as large as what we're looking at, a deficit as large as what we're looking at, again, I'm not so naive to think that we can do it all through budget reductions. I do believe that we need to look at revenue enhancements. You know, the Gannon, in the Gannon Decision, the Shawnee County District Court was very, very clear that the problems we're facing financially at the state is self-imposed, are self-imposed. And so that doesn't change the fact that we need to fund education, you know, but being the situation that we have and the hole that we must fill, you know, we're going to have to work together, we're going to have to find some revenue enhancements, and the first place to do that is we need to start looking at rolling back those income tax reductions from 2012, or at least, at the very least, delaying future income tax reductions that are set to take place this spring and summer. And so I would really encourage our legislature just to really go back and look at that. And I hear, not that I have an inside track, but I kind of hear rumors that the Governor will be proposing revenue enhancements as well as budget reductions. And I think to stave off the situation we're facing right now, it's going to have to be a combination of those things. So with that in mind, we do ask that they roll back those income tax reductions, or at least delay future income tax reductions. The fourth item on the recommendations down at the bottom of that first page is to support the existing school finance formula, and I've already shared that with the Board of Education. There's nothing wrong with the formula, the formula as written has been serving as well for, I believe, 23 years, and there's no reason to change it, you know? It's not one of those deals, I think I've shared this before. If it's not broke, break it, well, we don't need to break it. There's nothing wrong with the formula as written, just fund the formula. And so we ask our local legislators, as part of our delegation, to please resist any involvement or any vote for any major changes to our existing school finance formula. At least give, give the legal process an opportunity to work. Let the state appeal that, let the Kansas Supreme Court make a decision, and then we can look at the school finance formula based upon what the Kansas Supreme Court tells us. If we rewrite it now and the court renders a decision, we may have to rewrite it again, you know, or face potential litigation again. And so we encourage our legislature and our local delegation to please resist any attempts to rewrite a formula. Maintain the existing bond and interest state aid and capital outlay state aid. This was reinstated this past year as a result of the Gannon Decision, once again, to bring back equitability, equalization back into our system, and they reinstalled, re-implemented the capital outlay equalization. That was a good decision, it's something we needed to have, they dealt with the equalization piece on both that, as well as on the LOB, and have brought in additional dollars into our school system through Senate Bill 25, I believe 2511. There were other issues that came out of that as well, and things that were not as popular, and things that were not as good for kids. But the funding side of it, the equalization was taken care of through the first part of the Gannon Decision. We also asked them to continue to maintain bond and interest state aid. With the passage of our bond issue in April this past year, we wintered the voters with the idea that 27% of those bonds would be paid for with state aid. And so we asked them to continue that and to honor that commitment, moving forward for Kansas, for our Salinas taxpayers. Next, to continue the LOB state aid under the law, but bring it back to the point where it supplements the original intent of it, but not to be used to meet primary operational costs. And the only way you're going to do that is to increase the amount of state aid, so you don't have to use it for that purpose. Next, to mandate sustainability for existing Kansas Public Employees Retirement System. You know, Capers is really the opportunity to provide benefits for our certified staff, for all of our paid employees, and it's an opportunity to really attract quality, quality people to our ranks. The Kansas Public Employment Retirement System has been facing an unfunded liability for years because of the state of Kansas has not been holding up their commitment to fund it accordingly per statute. And then it was somewhat disconcerting with the Governor's allotment to pull about $40 million away from that again this year to meet the budget deficit. So we encourage our legislature to continue to fund adequately Capers. They had a plan in place that would have it balanced by 2034, let's go back and let's follow that plan. It was prudent, it was well put together, we had one of our local legislators, our local representatives, Representative Johnson heads that up, and he also was very disconcerted with the Governors pulling from that in order to balance that budget or fill that hole. And so with that in mind, we encourage the legislature to continue to fund Capers. Extremely important to the future of our public employees. Continue the multi-year school finance plan that was started several years ago. It's not a rolling two-year plan, it's just a two-year plan. That's fine, I mean, at some point in time, it'd be great to see a rolling two-year plan, so that every year, just add another year to it. But as it is right now, I can understand politically why that's not possible, because every two years, we have, many of our legislators are new, and we don't want to commit future legislators to that. But that being the case, still like the idea that we have a two-year budget plan, the Governor will be presenting a two-year plan in his State of the State Address, certainly helps with planning. And then finally, we ask the state to continue to support matching funds for Workforce Investment Act Title II, Adult Education, Family Literacy Act. I had the opportunity last week to present for Partners in Change, which was a program that just started, Kelly Mulberry, the Salinas Adult Education Centers partnering for the development of this program, it's going to be an outstanding program for many of our adults, to assist them in not only becoming employable, but to help find them employment, and we're looking forward to being a partner in that process for USD 305. That being the case, we believe, our vision here is that we believe that we're responsible for, as a primary educational delivery agency in Saline County from birth till death. We believe that we have a responsibility to educate all of our patrons, and that being the case, we really expect the state to kind of step up and help support adult education and continue the federal dollars as well. And then finally, the last piece in the bidding with our legislators, they said that they believe this may be another topic of discussion again this year, and that has to do with college and career-ready standards. We encourage our legislators to please do not do anything to roll back or eliminate college and career-ready standards. We are now, I believe, on year five of implementation, year five. That ship has already sailed. It would be very, very difficult if they decided to eliminate those standards, to determine which standards we would go back on, let alone a system, a statewide assessment system. And so, you know, we ask them, encourage them, and implore them, please do not And so, you know, we ask them, encourage them, and implore them, please do not do anything to change the college and career-ready standards. They're rigor standards, they're good for kids, they're right in line with our vision for USD 305, which is that 100% of our graduates will graduate college and career-ready. And that is irrespective whether they want to go to whatever post-secondary institution they want, whether they want to become employable, whether they want to join the military, the college and career-ready standards will get us there. And so we ask our legislators, please do nothing to tinker with those, or change those, or eliminate those. And so with that, that's our platform for 2015, in parentheses, '16. And with that in mind, I would encourage any comments from the Board of Education, questions, anything you would like to share? And if not, then I would ask for action on this. Dr. Black?
One of the things that never seems to come up in this discussion of rewriting the formula, I would guess, is the assumption that somehow they're going to save money as a result. And so I just want to point that out, that there is that assumption. And they may write the formula and find out it costs more using their basis. So the question attached to that comment is, is it even possible that they could do that in a year? I mean, I know anything's possible with some of these guys, but realistically, could you imagine them, just knowing the legislature as you do, actually getting a new formula passed?
It would be, to me, it would be extremely difficult to see that happen. And we're talking about school funding formula that unless you work with it, it's extremely complicated. And not only that, but you're talking about what type of formula can you develop that will balance the interest of 286 Kansas school districts that are very, very diverse. Now, I will tell you this, as far as USD 305 is concerned, anything minus equalization is not good for our kids because of our diversity. We have to have equalization, equitability for our kids. That means we need a system of weights for our students who are considered at risk, so we can get additional resources to work with those students, provide opportunities. With our ALL population growing, we need those additional resources to assist our students who are not speaking the English language yet in terms of their academic growth. So the point being is that whatever system put in place has to have equalization. Now, the point, to answer your question, short term, I don't believe they can do that in a 90-day session. I would have a little more hope for it if they had done some work on this during the interim. There was no work, to my knowledge, that was done on anything evaluating or looking at any type of alternate school finance formula in the interim session. And so consequently, yeah, I think it'd be extremely difficult to do that. And if they do do that, I would be concerned that it would go the direction of Senate Bill 2501, when it was kind of somewhat done at the last moment and kind of thrown together. And when you don't have enough time to adequately look at something as complicated as school funding, then you kind of get on the back end something that you kind of wish you didn't have. And so that's another reason, I think you make a valid point, that's another reason to encourage our legislators, if you're going to rewrite it, take the time to do it. I think it takes at least, it should be spread over at least two different sessions. One to study it, and the other one to look at implementing. But you can't, I don't see how it can be done in 90 days. And if they try to do something, the only thing that I've heard bandied about is some type of a block grant proposal that would basically say, here's how much we will allocate toward K-12. We will take that, divide it by the number of students we have, or divide it by the number of districts, and basically everyone will get the same. The problem with that is that we're not all the same. Some districts have students with higher need. Now, it sounds really easy to do that, but it's not equitable.
So on the equalization, the way I've always thought is you start with districts that are maybe in the Johnson County area that have significant tax revenues and so forth and so on, going down, does it necessarily follow that those greatest in need, in greatest need of equalization would necessarily be the poor, small districts? Or would it be districts with greater diversity or...
It's not, it has little to do with size. It has more to do with diversity. It has more to do to having families with low income. It has more to do with districts that have a large percentage, a large ethnic population where they have limited English language would be another way.
Like Garden City.
Absolutely. I mean, I get, absolutely. You know, Garden City, I believe they're at, gosh, 60 to 70% of their students are not only ethnically diverse, but they also have English language limitations, you know? And so when you look at a district like that, it requires more resources to meet the opportunities or to meet the needs of those kids, the academic needs of those kids. So it doesn't have as much to do with size as it does to do with diversity. Now, that being the case, there are very, very small Kansas school districts that it's very, very difficult, I mean, there's been a lot of conversation about consolidation. And I'm not going to sit here and say that I'm necessarily opposed to consolidation. I think in some cases, it sure needs to be looked at from an efficiency standpoint, you know? But that is a local board decision. And I personally don't believe that that's a decision that our local legislature or legislators really want to work through. I mean, that's, as you might imagine, extremely politically volatile decision to make. But I'm not saying that in some cases, school consolidation may not be appropriate.
Are we somewhere in the middle, would you say, in terms of the need for equalization?
We would say, I think, in the middle to above middle. And I think because of our diversity, when we look at, we have about 60%, over 60% of our kids qualify for free reduced lunches. You know, we're at 17% of our students are Hispanic, and that number continues to grow. I think each year, we become more diverse, we become above the halfway point in terms of the need for equalization.
Thank you.
You bet.
I was just curious as to whether KASB has a record of how many school districts prepare
similar kinds of legislative platforms and whether or not copies of those platforms are available.
You know, I can tell you that other school districts and other boards of education do adopt legislative platforms similar to what we have done. As a matter of fact, we kind of looked up and we saw some boards of education that adopted theirs recently. How many, I'm not sure whether KASB has a record of that. I can sure look into that for you and find out. And, I mean, were you wanting to get copies of those or not?
I thought it might be interesting, and I don't know that I want to go through 286.
I'm not sure there'll be 286.
Perhaps.
Yeah, I don't think there'll be, maybe not. It may not be quite that big either, so.
As long as they're not too long, at least I could glance at them. But I was just curious about that, because I think I'm wondering whether or not other school districts are similarly arguing their positions to legislators who, in some instances, it already appears are tone deaf.
There very well might be, Carol. I think that, and I can visit with Mark Paulman with KASB, he may have a record of those that have submitted those platforms. I'm not sure, excuse me?
Or Tom Krabs.
And Tom might have those as well. They might have an idea of maybe the number of those that have submitted those. I'm not sure they keep track of that. I would like to think, though, Carol, I think the larger point to your question is that, you know, as local boards of education and school officials, we have an absolute responsibility to advocate. We have to provide advocacy for our students, we have to provide advocacy for our school district. And I think that any board of education who doesn't do that is remiss, quite honestly. You know, I think it's a matter of having conversation with local legislators, to visit with them about what's important, to invite them to come out and visit our schools, to sit down and have a conversation about education, and not a mean-spirited conversation, a conversation about what's best for kids. And, you know, the GANNA decision came out, and I believe it's the right decision to make, but I'm not standing up here celebrating the decision. I'm saying, you know, we got to buckle down, we got some work to do. We have to work with our legislators, and we need to find a way to get the funding increased to the levels that it needs to be increased. And I understand that K-12 education is one issue, but it is 52% of the state general fund budget. So we need to have some serious conversations about what's best for kids. And the research would indicate right now that the dollars, and I think I saw some recent data that came out today, that Kansas is in the bottom tier in terms of increased funding per pupil in the last five years, you know? And fortunately, we continue to make achievements and accomplishments with kids. You know, we're still in the top 10 in the nation in terms of academic achievement, you know? And so something has to happen to turn that trend around. So, you know, I really want to approach our legislators from a position of cooperation and a partnership, and say, let's sit down, let's talk about education, let's talk about what's good for kids, let's talk about our school system, let's talk about some of the challenges we're facing, and why we need your help. You know, that's kind of where we are. But it's not an adversary, we're all in this thing together, this is important for kids.
Any other comments? Concerns? Can I get a motion to approve the 2015 legislative platform as presented?
Madam President.
Okay. Madam President, I move that we approve the legislative agenda as presented.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign. So move 6-0.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Board of Education and Madam President. And my next step on this will be, I will draft a cover letter to go with this, and then I will mail this to each of our legislators. I'll have numerous opportunities to visit with them during the legislative session. The chamber has legislative forums about three times during the session. I typically have an opportunity to meet with Representative Dirks and Representative McClays on a person-to-person basis. We have the Government Relations Meeting coming up. I think Board Member Trickle will be attending that next week as well, so we have an opportunity to dialogue with our legislators there. We will continue to work and keep the dialogue open and visit with them about what's best for Kansas education, Salinas education. We will continue to do that. So thank you for this, and we'll continue to advocate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our discussion agenda, which will include the proposal for elementary reading assessments with Ms. Exline.
I am here this evening to visit with you about a proposal that is coming from our elementary principals and our literacy coaches for the adoption of what's called the Benchmark Assessment We identified the need for a new reading assessment several years ago, actually, and this need has become more evident over time. There really are three reasons that we need to look at adding a different reading assessment and going away from several of the reading assessments that we have in place. The first is that right now, we lack a measure to really effectively pinpoint a student's reading level. And what we, the research overwhelmingly tells us that kids make maximum progress in reading if you have them reading at that just-right spot. And that's called the Zone of Proximal Development. And so what we know is, if the text that we have kids reading is challenging enough to provide content that they can learn and challenge them, but accessible enough that the student can be successful in the reading, that the child will make maximum progress, it's important to have a reading assessment that tells us what that ZPD is so that teachers can effectively place students for guided reading instruction. The second is the need for diagnostic information for effective planning. And here, we're really talking about programmatic planning and daily lesson planning. What exactly are the skills that are lacking with a group of students, and how do I deliver those? And this particular assessment provides us with a reading level for students, and then it provides us with many resources on what steps do we need to take to build the student's reading level. And then the third reason that we really need to look at a new assessment is, our current assessment program really focuses on isolated skills rather than holistic reading. And anytime you start into professional development and really build skill in an area, you have to build teacher skill within pockets, if you will, because there's just so much to learn. So for instance, in reading, we spent a lot of time learning how to deliver phonics instruction. And we spent time learning how to deliver fluency instruction. Now, we are ready to pull that all together, and we're ready to really get kids in connected text, eyes-on-text at the instructional reading level, and teachers need a tool to effectively do that. Our teachers have really probably done more and gotten more mileage out of the assessments that we currently have in place than anyone would have anticipated, because they work really hard to ferret out the information that they need, but this tool will really make their jobs easier in the long run. So our process to date has been, the very first thing that happened was, over time, principals, literacy coaches, and teachers have been saying, we really need a comprehension measure, that that really is a hole in our assessment program. So we went ahead and have literacy coaches work with Dr. Bandray, our district reading specialist, to compare the two most widely-used assessments. And after they did that, then Dr. Bandray spent some time reviewing what the literacy coaches had identified as strengths and weaknesses in each one of those programs, spent some time looking at what our USD 305 needs are, what do our kids need, where are teachers in terms of next steps? The next step was that, at the principals' meeting, I met with the administrators and talked to them about the different assessment options that were out there to fill the hole that had been identified. And they quickly asked me questions that I couldn't answer. And so step five was that I said, you know what, I really need to get Dr. Bandray with you, and we really need to dig into the assessment as a group. I need to sit with you and listen to the presentation and really understand what the difference is between what we're doing and what this assessment will provide. So Trish provided that session for principals and literacy coaches back in December. At that meeting, it was unanimous, we need to do something. And this particular assessment gives us the information that we need to actually move forward and to start to fine-tune our instruction. And so since that time, principals and literacy coaches have continued to communicate with teachers that we're trying to get something in place that will help them better identify comprehension levels, and that we are bringing a proposal to you for consideration for adoption. In order to understand what is different about this assessment than what we're currently doing, I want to talk to you just briefly about the components of reading. When we look for an elementary reading program, there really are five components that need to be in place for effective reading instruction. And the first thing is phonemic awareness. And this really is just whether or not a child can segment the sounds that are in a word. So can a child tell that "cat" has three sounds and that "cake" has three sounds? Absent the letters, we don't worry about the letters at all when we're at the phonemic awareness stage. A child's ability to do this at preschool and kindergarten is highly predictive of their success in reading as they get older. So we must have a measure that we can use to identify, can a student do this? So lots of work with rhyming and that kind of skill at the phonemic awareness phase. The second area is phonics. And phonics is what we would think of really as early literacy instruction. It's that, you know, when we say to a child, "sound it out." This is where the letters and the sounds start to go together for a child, and print actually starts to have meaning in terms of the letter-sound relationship in words. So phonics instruction and a phonics measure is critically important as well. Fluency really is the bridge between phonics and comprehension, between the decoding and being able to actually make meaning with text. And so with fluency, what we're looking for is a student's pace, a student's smoothness, a student's phrasing as they are reading. And so we need a measure that will measure fluency. What we know is, a student's fluency, as long as the phrasing, the pace, the smoothness are in place, is highly predictive of comprehension, and can really get in the way of comprehension if that's not, if fluency isn't there. So we must have a fluency measure. The fourth area is vocabulary. And vocabulary, the higher up a student goes, the more vocabulary becomes a barrier to text accessibility. When you get especially into content area texts at the secondary level, one of the biggest predictors of accessibility is the vocabulary and how dense the vocabulary is in a text. So we really do need something that will help us measure a student's ability to figure out vocabulary. And then finally, that comprehension measure. That really is the goal of reading, and we do all the rest of that in order for students to be able to comprehend more and more challenging texts. As you know, with the Kansas College Career Ready Standards, there's a lot of conversation about text complexity. And so we need to make sure that students have the opportunity to apply reading skills at that just-right reading level in order to have maximum progress with comprehension. So our reading assessment proposal is up here now. Right now, for phonemic awareness and phonics, we are using what we call the RDA, the Reading Diagnostic Assessment. And that assessment is given really at K-2, although we do use the RDA clear up through high school when we have kids who are having gaps in their phonics skills to try to fill in holes. But primarily at grades K-2. The fluency assessment we are currently giving is the Ames-Webb Oral Reading Fluency. And then, right now, we do not have a specific vocabulary measure. That really is an area of need, although that blank is a bit misleading, because at the comprehension level, our Ames-Webb MACE and our MAP assessment, which is our norm-reference standardized assessment, both of those comprehension measures do have questions that would be vocabulary-dependent. So that hole is a little bit misleading, we just don't have a measure that is specific to vocabulary right now. For the proposed assessment, what we are proposing is that, over the next several years, we transition to the Benchmark Assessment System, and that that assessment would take the place of all of the assessments except the MAP. would take the place of all of the assessments except the MAP. We would continue to do the MAP because I feel that it is very important that we have a norm-referenced assessment. That assessment actually tells us how many, what percent of our kids are making a year's worth of growth and would be a good measure for the effectiveness of our reading program in terms of, we want all kids to be making a year's worth of growth or more, we would like, but the MAP, we would want to keep. So we would put the Benchmark Assessment System in place to replace the other assessments. The intention would be every building principal, all of the elementary building principals, would like to use the comprehension components next year. We have had some discussion about the phonemic awareness and phonics portions. Right now, that Reading Diagnostic Assessment, we can continue to use and it would allow us to transition more easily to maybe do just the comprehension and then add in the other later. But over time, we would replace everything except the MAP with that Benchmark Assessment In the literature that I sent you, it actually showed you the Fuentes and Pennell Text Gradient. And this, this is just the way the texts are leveled. Again, when I very first started, I talked to you about the Zone of Proximal Development, that kind of sweet spot where kids really learn the very, the most that they can. When you use, when you're doing guided reading in instruction, that is, in a reading instruction where kids are reading at their instructional level, at the exact level where they, there's enough challenge, but enough prior knowledge and what, and what they can be successful in to make the maximum progress. When you're using this Fuentes and Pennell gradient, we can identify exactly what level the student needs to be in. Right now, our measures will give us the child's reading at the first-grade level. Okay, when you look up there at grade one, levels D, E, F, G, H, I, J are all first-grade. So when you think about really young readers, those of you who've, who've taught or who have listened to a child learn to read, or when you think about your own experience, there is a lot of difference between a beginning first-grader and an end-of-the-year first-grader. And many times, our kids even fall outside that grade-one band on this graphic. So what this test would allow us to do is to identify which kids need an H-level text and then it would give us strategies for what exactly those students need instructionally. And then in a guided reading instructional setting, in a small-group setting, that would be provided for the students. What typically would happen in an elementary classroom is you would have some skill instruction that's more phonics-based, you would have whole-group instruction where the kids were learning skills at a grade-level text, and then you would have this small-group instruction where they were applying that skill to a text that was just right for them. This allows us to have that text that's just right for each child. Let's talk time because that is the big elephant. The time required for the assessments, for this particular assessment, is significantly more than what we're currently doing. The Reading Diagnostic Assessment at K-2, and that's the one that tests phonics, phonemic awareness, that is individually administered and it takes about 20 minutes a child, okay? That, we still need an assessment that measures those skills. And this assessment has a portion outside of the comprehension measures that will do that. The Ames-Web Oral Reading Fluency Assessment that we give is individually administered, administered, excuse me, we use that at K-5. And it takes a minimum really of two to three minutes a student. It's a test where the child sits down next to you, the child reads a passage, you track errors, you track how many words per minute the child read correctly, and it gives you a fluency score. You also are looking at smoothness, pacing, phrasing, you know, what we talked about earlier. As long as you pick the right level passage, two to three minutes a student, sometimes kids have to read more than one passage. The next assessment that we currently give is that Ames-Web MACE. It's given at K-5. It is a group-administered assessment. It only takes three minutes. It's very quick. And then grading, but that is not class time, that would be outside of the classroom. With the Benchmark Assessment System, again, it would replace all three of the assessments above. And it, it would be individually administered. It takes, the first time you do it, it takes 30 to 40 minutes per child. And the reason it takes that long is you have to find, on that kind of A-to-Z scale, where is that spot where this child is going to make maximum progress? And so 30 to 40 minutes, the first administration, and then about 20 minutes after that. That is for the comprehension and the vocabulary component. It would take additional time for the phonics component for students that still needed that assessment, okay? Cost comparison. The Reading Diagnostic Assessment, we own, and so it is, it is no cost to us. We can continue to administer that during this transition until we're ready to go ahead and add in the supplemental tests from the Benchmark Assessment System, should you decide that we want to make this adoption. The Ames-Web Oral Reading Fluency, right now, we're paying $6 per year, per student. That's about $21,600 per year that would go away. And the Benchmark Assessment System would be a one-time cost of $375 per teacher. They would get a kit that has small books in it. They would have a nonfiction and a fiction-level text for each level that have been, that are, it's been through reliability and validity studies so that they would know that if a child could read this level text and it was appropriate, then all the texts that are out in the field that are leveled by the Fuentes and Pennell system would be appropriate for that same child, okay? So $78,000 upfront. And then the only additional cost would be if we needed to add another kid, if we had another teacher. So I want to just close with benefits and drawbacks. And the benefits really are that this would improve instruction every single day for every single child. Our kids that are reading above grade level would get instruction that is just right because we would know what text to be using for instruction. Our kids that are struggling, the same thing, and our kids that are right on grade level, you know, we would be able to have that information to empower our teachers to, to really effectively group kids for that guided reading portion of the lesson. It is a strong comprehension measure. Like I mentioned, there, there was an external study done to make sure that it's valid, reliable, that the results will get us the levels that are appropriate and then would match with what else is out in the field for reading materials. And it, it's the one assessment that replaces multiple assessments if we decide to go this way. As far as drawbacks, there will be a cost for professional development to, in time and in money, to learn a new assessment. One of the things that Dr. Bandray assures me is that, as teachers learn to give this assessment, their knowledge of reading will really increase and our effectiveness in the classroom will increase. And like I said, our teachers work so hard and so they, I, you know, I think that they certainly would, would welcome a tool that would help them better meet kids' needs. And then the cost of the assessment, you know, as I said, $78,000 upfront for us to adopt the assessment. And then finally, time. This is a time investment and, you know, when I think about, we just, I guess we need to answer the question, is several days of instruction upfront, of classroom time upfront worth having daily instruction that is targeted and just right, right where it needs to be throughout the year? And so we would ask you to certainly consider that. What I would say in closing is that, you know, this is kind of like a golf game. When, when you very first start to golf, small changes will really change your game and you can make changes very rapidly. We're, we have made all the changes that I think we can with our current assessment battery and our teachers have really worked to meet kids' needs and are doing a fantastic job. This gives them that tool to refine now and to really get that guided reading portion of the lesson where it needs to, to be more like a professional golfer would do, you know, when you get to the point where, you know, I need something that's much more specific to be able to identify what students need. So at this time, I do have several literacy coaches and principals, lead teachers here, and Dr. Bandray is here, and I would entertain questions as well. If there's something I can't answer, I may defer to one of them.
Could you walk us through how a second-grade teacher would deal with this first assessment? Do we have 25 youngsters in a class or do we have fewer than that? Or how are we going to do this? I just want to know how this person's going to go through that first process of 30 to 40 minutes per student and what the other kids are going to be doing at the same time?
Right.
Those kinds of things.
I think, to be perfectly honest, we're going to probably have to look at substitutes that first time that they administer the assessment. To be fair to the students, to make that go as quickly as possible and to have instruction continue in the classroom, you know, 40 minutes, one-on-one with a student, when you have that many little people, is, probably just isn't going to happen. So the, certainly the first time through. Now, when we have talked to other districts that have administered this assessment, once that, once that first test is done and they're down to the shorter assessment, they know which kids are going to take longer and which kids, really, I can test pretty quickly because teachers really do know their kids. And so, you know, this time, while the other kids are busy doing spelling, you know, daily work or doing guided, the guided reading partner reads, I could grab a student so that, and most of them do not provide subs after that first time. But the first time, I think, yeah, I think we would probably have to look at something to free up some time for them to do that.
I would think so because I, I think no matter how angelic you're going to have somebody who's going to be off-task, doing something, and then you interrupt your testing in order to have to deal with whatever else is going on in the room, so, yeah. To be fair to the student being tested as well as to the other kids, I think you need something to happen there. Thanks.
How often will these tests be re-administered throughout the year?
What we would look at is a fall administration and then during the year, the teacher would do a running record, and that's something that many of our teachers are already doing, to determine whether, when a student was ready to move from one level to another, so they would not continue to do the, that entire test during the year by any means. And then we would probably look at an end-of-the-year administration so that we would have a pre-date, pre-date at the beginning of the year and post-date at the end of the year and could look at growth. And teachers could administer the test as many times as they wanted if they had a student for whom they really did, something wasn't working and they needed more information, but that, the expectation from the district level would be a fall-spring.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Exline?
And the current Ames-Web Oral Reading Fluency is costing us $21,600 per year, correct?
Correct.
So if we continued that in four years, we could have saved money by going with this, this system, which is a one-time deal.
Correct.
Well, I would like to thank Mrs. Exline and her staff for such a thorough presentation and anticipating and answering all of the questions that we might have. This hasn't been done without thought, and I commend you.
Thank you.
I don't know. Can we move forward with a motion?
Absolutely. It's at the board's discretion.
I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the Benchmark Assessment System to be started as soon as possible.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those, or any discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. So moved 6-0. Thank you, Ms. Exline.
Thank you so much. We actually talked about if we, if we could get this moving so that we could train this spring so that the principals and staff will be so happy to be able to walk in and be ready to go. I appreciate your time.
All right. Moving on to our School Board Committee reports and upcoming dates of importance, which include the January 22nd through 23rd KASB Governmental Relations Seminar in Topeka and also Thursday, February 5th, our Chamber Annual Banquet at the By Center at 6:30 p.m. Mary Ann, do you want to start us off tonight?
Yes. I had the Smokey Hill Service Center meeting last Thursday and we directed Diane Mann to open applications for the Executive Director's position. We're going outside as well as inside and we will be interviewing prior to February 9.
Anything else?
That's it.
That's it? All right.
No report?
Not done?
I had a Heartland Policy Council meeting and we talked about the bond project and the building process and where we were at on that. And most of the committee members were very excited to hear the details that were going on with that. There was a few questions that were brought up about the all-day kindergarten and when it was starting. Some of, some of the information that they were getting, they were thinking that it was actually starting this coming year. So I don't, I can't remember, I haven't written down at home, but I can't remember what the place was where they were getting that information from to hopefully correct.
Is it one of the other early childhood agencies here in town or was it, you know?
It's, it's something with the mental health.
Central Kansas.
Yeah, I think that's what it was. Yeah.
Okay. Do you, oh, okay. Do you, are there certain people we need to visit with or communicate with on that?
I'm not sure what or who it was, but.
I know the lady that's on the committee, so I'll visit with her. She thought just part of them were starting next year.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
That's because of the schedule of the buildings.
Yeah, if you could clarify that, that would be great. Thank you.
That was it.
All right, thank you. Carol?
No report, madam.
All right.
On the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, we have two, two things that they're continuing to talk about, which is the surveying the public for the appropriate place for a dog park. And they are continuing to get, trying to get input and they are getting input, but they're, they're trying to get to a significant amount that, so it's, you know, representative. And then the Comprehensive Bike Plan will be before the City Commission, I believe, in February, they're hoping for. And the two January meetings, the two groups that have to, committees that has to get through first are the zoning committee and then Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, which I, and we're both, at the next meeting, will be voting on those. I don't anticipate there'll be any, any problems with that, although I understand on the zoning committee, the one person who is against it is our former deputy superintendent. So I don't know.
Really?
Yeah, for some reason. So anyway, that, that's it.
Mr. Hall and I sat in on the economic development meeting last Wednesday, I believe, and that was some lively discussion.
Will we be on there?
I don't know. I've talked to lots of people. We'll see.
We're really doing 100.
Well, yeah, I'll, and I, I had that. I'll mention that now. I mean, that, that was an interesting conversation. All I will say at this point, and I know John and I were somewhat.
Surprised?
Surprised is a good word. I think, I think surprised, I think we learned a lot. I, I will say this, that, that USD 305, and I think we pride ourselves in the fact that we will develop partnerships with any government agency out there. We've had partnerships with the chamber, we've had partnerships with the county. I know the county's worked with us on development of school safety and security. We've had partnerships with the city. We will continue to do that and that will not change. And so that being the case, if the question ever comes up, does the impact of USD 305 on economic development? I believe any public school system has a huge part to play when it comes to economic development. You know, I think the fact that we have recent passage of a bond issue and the impact, the economic development that we're going to bring to this community, from that alone is tremendous, not to mention that we are one of the, if not the, largest employer in Saline County. So I, yeah, absolutely, if we're asked, we'll absolutely, in, in any way possible, in a cooperative way, work to, to bring about increased economic development to our community. We will do that in the most positive way possible, and I'll leave it at that. So.
Yeah, it was a good, good learning experience for how people work together. Other than that, go ahead and turn the floor over to you for your superintendative board.
Did you want to add something to that?
I said, "Or not."
Or not, or not. Through the magic of technology, we already have a response to your question, Board Member Brandard, on, Mark Tomlin already emailed us back and said legislative platforms unfortunately are not collected by KASB. So they don't really have, they don't know how many districts have done it. He would venture a guess that probably the larger districts do, maybe many of the smaller districts do not. And he kind of ended up with, you know, I kind of wish we would be collecting that information.
You know what? It might just be a really good idea.
It might be. I think it would be a good idea. I'll, I'll plant that seed.
Well, you would be surprised at how many school board members I've talked to who do not have legislating platforms in their school districts.
Right.
And some of them about our size.
Well, if KASB encouraged that kind of thing dramatically with this whole business to say, you know, "We'd like to collect these and we want you all to do that," that, that would be a really great function for.
Well, that would be a step in the right direction. Yes, it would.
Yes.
Well, I think it would have a huge part to play with legislative advocacy.
Yes, it would.
I mean, that's.
Maybe we could be on the same.
So I'll tell you what, next week, Mary Ann, you So I tell you what, next week, Mary Ann, you and I are both out there, we'll just kind of, we'll campaign that deal. We'll get it out there next week, we'll work it.
Good job, guys.
We'll get that going. All right, tomorrow is going to be an exciting day for the future of our middle schools, is we have the placement hearing for the Kansas State High School Activities Association in Topeka. And so we have a group that will be representing both Lakewood Middle School and South Middle School, will be traveling to Topeka and meeting with the executive board, as well as representatives from two other leagues, the Pioneer League, which is the middle school version of the AVCTL, which is our high school league, as well as Centennial Middle School League, which is based out of Manhattan Junction City and then for Topeka schools. And so they've been invited as well, and it's going to be kind of a sit-down conversation about why we believe we need a league affiliation, and I'm sure they're going to share why they believe they would just do not have us in their league. And so we're going to have that conversation and see where we are. I have shared this in the past, that the last, when that vote was taken, when we petitioned Pioneer League, it was 11 to 9. And, and we need, actually, I think it's 13, 13 to 9? 13 to 9, and we needed 15 votes. And so we're just two schools, so support is there. I have letters from four superintendents from that league saying absolutely, we're in favor. I have one superintendent actually is going to be there in support of us, and so we're going to go, and we're going to visit with them. And then I feel very confident that coming out of that meeting, that we'll have a league affiliation for the 15, 16 school year. And so, you know, that's exciting, we're looking forward to that. We'll kind of work through the process, and I'll report back to the board kind of where we are once we find out from that. I shared with several of you, had pre-bid conference last evening, is at the Hagman Education Center. We had over 100 folks in attendance, representing 82 contracting firms or vendors. And, and that is a tremendous turnout. We, we had to go out and set up more chairs, you know, it was really great to see the turnout because what that tells me is that there is tremendous interest in our local community about these upcoming bond projects. The Board of Education has already approved nine schematic designs, you'll do another one this evening with the Heartland Programs building, and we're about 30 days away from the bidding process, probably start seeing some groundbreaking occur in April. And so once we start seeing buildings get started, you're going to start seeing the domino effect. And I had a number of folks who came up to me afterwards, and were just very thankful about the fact that we not only had the meeting, but they felt like everything was well organized, and the information was very easy to understand, and they appreciate on the front end having this information before we just start rolling out construction documents. And so, a lot of interest there, and so it was good to see such a good turnout.
Just a quick question on that, did, did local include people who were not local?
Yes.
Did McPherson show up, for example?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure, I, I have the list of those who were there, but there were those who weren't, the line of contractors as well.
Just curious.
Yes, and I did, in my, in my welcome comments, I mean, I shared with them the guiding principles that the board has already adopted, and the fact that we will be on time, the fact that we will be under budget, the fact that we will have quality buildings, the fact that we will be transparent in our process, but also shared with them, you know, make no mistake, the Board of Education's emphasis is we're going to try to keep these daughters local to the extent possible. Now, that being said, we also have statutory bid laws we're going to follow, and so that's kind of where it's at. So we have devised it in such a manner to make sure that we've leveled the playing field so that our local contractors have every opportunity to participate in this process. And so it was great to see such a good turnout, and they seem to be very appreciative of that. So it was a good meeting, and Mr. Upson and his staff did a nice job putting that on, so. Another piece of information, bowling has begun. Yes, and we had two, just came from one today, I think the administrative team will enjoy that, because we've had two, two events, and I've seen about half of them already there at the bowling alley. So we're seeing really good turnout, the kids, it's really kind of good just standing to watch, I was making a comment, who was, I think it was maybe Stan or Mike, I think Mike, no, we're standing watching, and we see all these kids from central and south, and it's like, you know, without bowling, where would these kids be right now? You know, and they seem excited, we have folks coming out, supporting them, it, it's really a good move. And I will tell you, I've had several patrons come to me, and parents came to me, and asked me to pass on to the board their appreciation for making the decision to add bowling, because it, it has had, in their case, several of their cases, a tremendous impact on their child. Because these are kids who may not have been engaged, and now they feel like they're, they're some meaning there to what they're doing, and so they just, they're just very, very pleased. And so I want to say on behalf of those folks, thank you for doing that, it was an absolutely great decision. And, and I, I kind of like watching, I guess, you know, it's, it's just a really short deal, starts at three, it's usually over by five, but it's really, I know it's very cliche to say, but it's pretty cool. So, so thank you for that, and they say the same thing. Horizon Award winner, had the opportunity last week to have a phone call from Brad Nuenzwander, Acting Commissioner of Education, to one of our high school teachers at South High, American History teacher, Mr. Colin Carlson, was selected as one of the top 32 Horizon Award winners in the state of Kansas, and very, very deserving, you know, Mr. Carlson's outstanding young teacher, this is his second year at South High, he's, you can tell when you walk in his room that he connects with kids, the kids enjoy his instruction, he's very, very good at what he does, and so I, just, just congratulations to him. I mean, they're going to have a special ceremony in Wichita in February, and Mr. Carlson's been invited out to, to be part of that ceremony, and just a good young teacher, and not only that, he's also a bowling coach, you know, which is really a pretty.
That was.
He is, he is, yeah, he is up there running around tonight. He done professional, everything about bowling, but he's just really, it's great to be, just be here and be part of it. So, Mr. Carlson, congratulations to him, he's a great teacher, great young teacher, we're very, very fortunate to have him. Next week, as already shared, Ms. Trickle and I will be attending the Governmental Relations Meeting and twisting a few arms to start collecting some platforms. And so are we on that together, Ms. Trickle?
Yes, we are.
We're all over it, okay, we'll do that. Already talked about the Economic Development Meeting, then the last item, just report on that, we're continuing to work on the current tech ed pathways and coursework in conjunction with the building projects that are also occurring simultaneous to that, and so I'm sure we'll be hearing some more information when it comes to current tech ed programming in the future as we kind of move forward with that. So, a lot of things going on with the school system and exciting times, so, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Moving on, we have need for two executives, executive sessions, am I correct?
Yes, Madam President, I would like to request the executive session for negotiations, first of all, for 15 minutes, please.
Okay. Can I get a motion for that? Or I will accept a motion for that, somebody, anybody? Carol.
I move that the Board of Education go into executive session at, what, 6:25 for 15 minutes, for the purpose of discussing employer, employer, negotiations, that's fluency, because.
A little bit of phonics.
If this matter were discussed in open session, it might jeopardize resolution of the negotiation issues, and that the Board of Education reconvene into open session at 6:40 in the conference room.
Second.
Super, thank you. I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that before we vote?
Just go take that.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, so move 6-0. Do we need a motion for the other one?
No, we'll do that on the back end of this first slide.
All right, thank you.